Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Roll call.
For Tommy Johnson.
Rick Warren, Oklahoma County Court Clerk.
Joe Blauff, Attorney General.
Michael Taylor for County Commissioner Brian Maughan.
Kevin Calvi.
Butch Freeman.
Barry Stein.
All right, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next item, or actually first item is approval of minutes, and I think we have minutes from November 16th and 17th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All favor? Aye. Okay, following items three through thirty are consent items for discussion and possible action, routine in nature. Do I have a motion on the consent docket?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to approve items two through thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All favor? Aye. I forgot to vote, so whatever. All right. At the end of the, now we'll go into the recurring agenda items. Micah.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're here for the monthly financial report. We start with page one on the monthly report. And you have the general fund budget. With, which reflects a reserve of three million one hundred and eighty-one.
Micah, would you forgive me? I'm trying to find that document so I can look at it. How do I do that? Do you?
There's help on the way.
Okay, thank you. Do you want the PowerPoint, and what page are we on?
Yes, the PowerPoint. It's on the first page.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Yeah, this is a general fund budget. And it reflects the reserve of three million one hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. Then we'll go to page five on the report. Which is the comparison to last year for the general fund. Let me see. Right there. So we have. We're right on track. Just some comments. The interest, of course, is the ARPA fund interest that goes into general fund, so that is really a high number. Once we have two million from the ARPA interest, we'll move it to the new jail fund. On the, compared to last year on the property, property tax. As of November, we have collected three and a half million more than last year, but that's just a timing issue that will catch up. We're collecting a lot more in December as well. Then, the miscellaneous revenue is up because we got some refund checks from FEMA for the twenty twenty-one ice storm. So everything is looking very good in general fund. Then we go to. The employee benefits, which is page eleven on the monthly report. Let's see what we have here. This is worth, this is based on five months of data. We're keeping track, of course, very closely. We predicting that we have nine hundred thousand as a balance at the end of the year. And we also keep continuing getting ARPA reimbursements. We actually have an item on the agenda where we're setting six and a half million dollars aside for future COVID claims. So that is a good. Some good information as well. All right, the next one is the weekly claims. The medical and prescription claims. Right on track here, we actually, in December, we're getting a, two rebate checks for almost nine hundred thousand dollars that will be deposited. So, that is the medical and prescription claims. And then the last part is going to be our capital projects. Which is page seventeen on the monthly report. We're gonna have. An item on the agenda where we're creating a line item for the department relocation support requested by Mr. Trumbo. And we have unallocated funds of seventy-seven thousand in this fund. So, that's all I have. If you all have any questions?
Questions? Do we have a motion to receive the report as presented? Hello?
I'm trying to get back to where I was. Thank you though for your help. I appreciate that.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to receive the report. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, Micah. All right, item thirty-two is the update from the BET. Mr. Cody.
Good morning. Like scooted way forward now. Way closer. Currently, the, the reserve balance, as Micah mentioned, is just over three million dollars, three million one hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. We only have one new item to the watch list this month, but it is a fairly large item. A BOCC approved a grant request that's going through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for two million dollars. BOCC had requested that we add that to the watch list. We did add that. We've got a pretty robust watch list right now. We're sitting at just over five point four million dollars in items that we're tracking. So, obviously, more items on there than we have available. So, we need to be kind of cognizant of that, but like I said, that's the only new item this month.
Questions? Motion to receive? Motion?
Second? Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There we go. Okay, John.
Sure.
What are we looking at? Medical?
It says slide eleven. There we go. Good morning.
Morning.
We're in a lot better place on the health plan side than we were at this point last Budget Board. If you remember, we compared the last fiscal year to this fiscal year at the last Budget Board meeting, we were one point five million dollars over budget compared to last fiscal year. Last December, we had a huge medical and prescription month. This December, we came in one point one million under last December, which is really helping our net number. Total net where we're at is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand over where we were last fiscal year. As Micah said, we received a prescription rebate check of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand this, this week. That's not factored in, so if we factor that into that net number, we're actually five point one percent under this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year. So, we saw a big ramp up in the first five months, and that's due to really delayed treatment because of COVID. Health plans across the nation have seen that. People kind of delayed treatment of COVID and got a lot of treatment. But we absorbed that, and luckily, we're trending down now. And looking forward to February, just to put that in your minds, last February, February, we had a huge medical and prescription month. Everything's trending down now, so once we bump against that month, we should see it trend down even lower. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Motion to receive?
Got a motion and a second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. All, all relate to the same issue, and that is moving appropriations within the ARPA funds from one call center to the other. So I would suggest that we could take all four at the same time. I don't know really of anything controversial on this. Again, it's just, it's a moving, as I said, from one call center to the other. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And the motion is?
To accept all four as directed.
Okay, thirty-four, five, six, and seven. Second? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
My yes didn't come up.
I think you have a formal second, all second.
Oh, okay, there we go. Motion passes. Item number thirty-eight, District One.
Thank you, sir. Items thirty-eight and thirty-nine are both from District One. Item thirty-eight is to transfer twenty-five hundred down into our capital account to balance that out and be able to finish out the year in the general fund budget. If you want me to do thirty-nine, I can. Okay. Thirty-nine is just. Taking care of our appointee to the Handbook Committee. Previously, Anna Lingthorne had been our principal member. She's no longer employed here. So we're asking that Ms. Kent serve in that capacity and clarifying that Mr. Compton and myself would be alternates.
Motion to approve thirty-eight.
And thirty-nine?
Nope. Just thirty-eight.
Okay.
They're two different items.
I'll second thirty-eight.
All right, we have a motion to approve item thirty-eight. Vote please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve thirty-nine.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-nine.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I quit calling for vote just because it eventually does show up. All right. Where are we? We are into forty. A new line item in the capital funds, Capital Projects Fund twenty-ten. Stacy.
When we finish our projects, we usually have some money left over. And it always goes into the miscellaneous account. I think you heard earlier, there's about seventy-seven thousand in there. I was asked if I could anticipate where that money might end up, or the next time we have some leftover money, where we might put it next. And what we have trouble with, when departments are asked to move temporarily out of their space and then back into their space. There's a little bit of cost to that, moving expenses, their temporary communications for their phone and their computers. And then we usually have, if they're in this building, a small asbestos procedure, which we do in-house. But the overtime for those employees are paid out of these types of accounts. So, right now, we would just set up that line item. It wouldn't have any money in it. But the next time we complete a project and close it out, we might put the money straight in there rather than just into miscellaneous and have to move it later. So it'd be helpful, saves one step, if we could get some dollars in there for those issues.
But not today, that's not, you're not asking for that today. You're just asking for, from an accounting standpoint, to set up this fund.
Set up the, yeah, the fund.
Did you clarify exactly what it could be used for?
Basically, moving expenses for any department.
But not furniture, capital, things like that?
No, no, we're not going to buy capital with it.
Furniture? No. Okay. Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion and a second? If you would, vote please. Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, John, back to the front.
Item number forty-one is a standard renewal agreement with Channel Bound LLC. They do our tax reporting for our health plan. No changes, same price as last year. Just asking for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay, if you would, vote please.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Warren?
I'd like to bring up the COVID right now. That's getting ready to run out, which is the eighty hours. We allow our employees up to eighty hours. We're coming into a winter. This is the first year that it has not been pandemic, it hasn't been, they've lowered it. But we don't know yet. We know it's rising in the winter. We know right now we have more cases than we had in the summer. So I'm suggesting right now that we stick with the same program through the winter. And maybe in May or June, evaluate based on the evidence that we have, based on the statistics, how many people got sick with COVID. If we see that it's about like the flu, then what we can do is just use our ready, our sick leave, our normal sick leave. But if we see we still have somewhat of a pandemic, the numbers are rising. And I had an incident in my office where one of my employees came in. She was sick that morning. She collapsed. Our staff helped her. And three days later, I had a number of people with COVID. And so, when you work in real close areas, and many of us do, then we need to look out and see what we can do about it. So at this point in time, I would suggest, and what I'd like for y'all to do, maybe not vote on it today, maybe we hold the vote until January. But think about it. Give you time to analyze and think about this. Think about how we should handle it. Currently, we allow up to eighty hours. Currently, we recommend five days, and then when their fever ends, not using fever medicine, but when it ends on its own, then they can take their test and come back to work. We in my office require, and I hope we all do, I require a doctor to go to our clinic and get a test that is accurate. And I'd like for everybody to think about that, put it on, we can vote today. If you want to give me a yes today, I'm all in. But if you're not, we can think about it and bring it back up in January, take another look at it, and then see what we want to do about it.
Okay, I don't have a problem voting on it today.
I'd love that.
I'd like to have it in place by the time we hit one January.
All right.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote please.
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, item number forty-three, Commissioner Calvi.
Yeah, so this is a change of salaries of county officers. It is prospective only. It does not impact me. If you have any questions?
I, I got a couple of comments. And I'd also like to enter into record what this motion would mean, what this motion would do from a financial standpoint. Couple of points I want to make is that we, as county officers, we've had one raise in the last fourteen years. Now, we are a unique governmental body in that the elected officials established the cap for what we can pay our people. We cannot pay our people more than what we make. So, increasing the elected officials then likewise then gives you the opportunity to increase your key people. I would also say, and I'm going to read these just real quick. If this motion passes, as of January third, the county treasurer would be making one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The county court clerk, the sheriff, and D-two county commissioners would be making a hundred and thirty thousand eighty-seven dollars. And the county commissioners for D-one and three, and the county assessor would go to one hundred and thirty-five thousand eighty-seven, as would the newly elected county clerk upon his or hers wearing in in April. I would also like to point out. Compared with Oklahoma City, with Edmund and Midwest City, and very likely others. They still will be paying much more than what we are paying to, to the elected officials and to those under us. So, basically, that's my comments on it. Other comments?
I would like to make a comment. We just recently gave our employees an eight and a half percent raise. We did not increase their ability to purchase. What happens is inflation. In over fourteen years, your money buys less than it did fourteen years ago. So this year has been a unique year with inflation climbing and climbing. You have a lifestyle based on what your income is. We all live within our means. But when inflation takes seven and a half, eight and a half, in some areas, ten, eleven percent, certain food items, that means you have less money. Even though you're making the same, your ability to keep your lifestyle, your ability to save your money and do what you do each and every day of your life has lowered because of inflation. Some people forget that. We gave our people an eight and a half percent raise, and they deserved every penny of it. But what we gave them was the ability not to lower their lifestyle, not to have to change the way they live, but to keep it level and keep them going. And that's what we're doing here. A raise should be based on the, next year, if inflation goes down, a raise is not necessary. In fact, if it stays down, you can hold off a couple of years and some jobs. But when inflation goes up, then the salaries have to change. It's just the way the world works. I mean, I, I can tell you that nineteen sixty-eight, I bought my first brand-new car, Camaro, twenty-nine hundred dollars. It's changed.
Wish you had it now, don't you?
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
On the nineteen sixty-eight?
Yeah.
I was just a twinkle in someone's eye. So. Walk me through this. If the lowest-paid elected official is going to be, what did you say? For yours?
Actually, it'll be the treasurer's. And then, that's because I don't take office until July third.
Well, understood.
Sworn in, well, yeah, sworn in, so I'm in office.
So, those comptrollers out there that will be paying those staff up to a dollar less than their electives or what they ever choose. Are we, are we paying those people at the lowest elected official's rate or the highest elected official's rate?
I believe it depends on the officer, their officer they report to.
So there won't be parity amongst those that are getting raises?
This constitution prevents it.
Prevents parity?
Prevents it in this case. It's one of the few offices where you have that concern.
So I guess, were these laws and formula in place two years ago when the electives received their raise?
No, they changed. The statute changed. There were, there were new variables that were incorporated into the formula. It's a very complicated formula, but it was, it was changed back then. So, but the, but the constitutional.
Back in twenty, twenty.
Constitutional provision is that an elected officer can vote on an increase, but they can't, if they're currently serving, they can't receive that until they are reelected. So that's the variable.
Well, that's fine. I was just verifying, so twenty twenty, when everyone got the same raise and the same payroll cycle.
That was a decision made by the board to accept that limited amount.
But are you saying that the board could have chose these?
Previously?
Staggered amounts like you're getting today?
Yes, sir.
And I believe that there was a request from the DA, and the DA has opined that this does follow the state, does follow the law, constitution and law. It's on your request?
Well, I, I understand that. But I'm just trying to verify, so two years ago, this set of formula could have had a staggered rate for the other officials before?
Yes. And, and I believe that there was a variable in those, in that, that, in that decision that was made based on those previous salaries.
Well, at that time, they all chose to stay at the same rate. So if the new rate's going to be one thirty eighty-seven for some of those.
Okay, any other comments?
Commissioner Blumert is attending a meeting this morning with several elected officials from northeast Oklahoma City. They're, they're announcing some exciting rehab opportunities in the northeast part of the city. She is supportive of this. Appreciates the comments of Mr. Warren and you, Mr. Freeman, about the eight and a half percent and the raises, not just the eight and a half this year, but I think we gave up to five percent last year when you looked at the COLA that was given. And the potential for merit increases. So, trying to help our employees keep ground, and as you said, there are some, there are some that worked in our office, I'm not talking about myself, I was capped, that were not even able to realize the eight and a half percent that their fellow coworkers got. And this would allow them to be able to come back and, and get that adjustment as well, so.
Any other comments?
Did you make a motion?
I will. My only comment would be, I don't know what the difference is in terms of parity between last time and this time. I think there are valid arguments on both sides of this. In this instance, I voted against the last pay raise because it benefited me. This one does not, and so I am happy to make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote please.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Can you bring that last screen back up? The vote screen? I'm sorry? Okay. What was the final motion? Six, I mean, the final vote was six, four, one against? Is that correct? Okay. All right. Motion passes, six, one. All right. We have now gone into citizens' participation. Is there any citizens signed up? Okay. Board comments. Start with the sheriff.
The sheriff was unfortunately unable to be here today. He's at the, at the mall representing a DUI enforcement group, so he sent me in instead. Sorry. But he wishes he could have been here, but couldn't make, couldn't be in two places at one time today.
Okay.
I'd like to first of all wish everybody next week a happy, a very happy Christmas, a very Merry Christmas. I hope everybody comes back to work in January very safe. And happy, and get all the presents you deserve. And we're very blessed to have each and every one of you as our employees, as our friends, as part of our staff, so thank you very much. And I'll see you later.
Just happy holidays to everyone in case I don't see each of you, and to everyone out there. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, and this is my last Budget Board meeting, so it's been a pleasure and honor to serve with all of you. I wish the best to you and all of our employees here at the county, and I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas. And a congratulations to Mr. Taylor on his new position that he's taking, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. I do agree. Congratulations. I believe, I believe you were telling me you will become effective January one, the Assistant City Manager Nichols Hills. Is that announced?
It is.
Right now. Rut row.
Thank you, January third.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner? You and I go back a long ways. We go back so far that both of us have brown hair. So wish you Godspeed, your future. I understand you're in the process of building a home or going. I hope, I got to be careful here. I'm letting out a lot of secrets that I didn't know I was supposed to. Anyway, we're going to miss you. Stein?
God bless you, Kevin Calvi. Thank you for all you've done for Oklahoma County and Oklahoma and the legislature. We appreciate it very much. We talk about inflation and on our website, I, I sent it around to all of the elected officers. There's a sixteen point five percent increase in the income level for the senior assessment freeze. And I'd encourage you to visit with, make sure everybody knows that and files for it so they can start saving money on their property taxes. But you can see how inflation has impacted that because that's a federal number, median family of income of four. And it is an incredible way of being able to save millions of dollars countywide and hundreds of million dollars statewide. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and welcome to Jessica Clayton, who's going to be coming into our District One office, or District Two office. When, when you officially start? The thirtieth, so she's, she and I have. The thirtieth, so she's, she and I have been at every single event in the last two days, so what are we doing for lunch? Merry Christmas, everybody.
Okay, is there any new business? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.